Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
At 6:33, I'm going to call this virtual meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified School District to order. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see the agenda, but if you have not, let me put your hand up or say you haven't.
I haven't.
And one of the protocols of the meeting here is that we're going to ask each person to identify themselves by name when they speak so that I'll know who it is that hasn't.
Okay, Lynn Morgan.
Hi Lynn.
I've seen the agenda.
All right, well, let me just slide over to the agenda. It's basically two items. Let me just go pull it back up while we're doing what we do here.
Which email was it in and I can find it and bring it up?
Glenn and Carrie, do you know the date when that email was sent out?
I need to check. I don't know if it was in the email, Lynn.
I already logged out, but I think so.
Go to the website, it's there.
Website, okay.
The WNESU. Because I think the email was just the Zoom invite.
I have an agenda from April 2nd in my email, Lynn, if that's helpful.
Yeah, it should say, "Special Board Meeting, Monday, April 6th at 6:30. We call to order the usual adjustments and amendments to the agenda, communication and public comment," which is three and two items for new business. One is discussion of district meeting and the other is a possible updated warning and revision, followed by adjournment. So that is the agenda. Before we begin, however, I would like, since I've called this to order, I would like each person to identify themselves. I see Lynn Carey, why don't you say hi?
Hello, hi, thank you for coming.
Jessa West Clark?
Hi.
Party on mute, but she can wave. Doug Husius can put his hat on and just did. Fact TV is here, but it's on mute. Cheryl Charles is here. Cheryl, can you say hi? Well, Cheryl, are you there? You're on mute. Kim Record is here, says, "Kim, can you unmute for a second, say hello?"
Hello.
There we go. Ricky Adams, our technical guru, who's the only reason why any of these meetings ever worked. Say hi.
Hi, partially work.
Charlotte Gifford is here. Say hi, Charlotte.
Evening, everyone.
Excellent. And Michelle Dolph is here. Say hi, if you could. Michelle? There we go. Josh Haberman is here and I see his lovely wife and kids. I assume he's behind that.
Yes, hello, Jack, how are you?
Oh my gosh.
All right. Lynn Morgan is here.
Yep.
All right. Susan Small here is here. Hi, Susan. She's here in case we say something interesting. And is that 802-376, is that you, Cheryl?
I think that is Cheryl, are you, who's the host? Lynn, you're the host. You might be able to unmute Cheryl's phone. I don't think she has it joined with her video session.
Cheryl Charles?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the 8093 phone number is actually Cheryl's audio session.
I needed to have you unmute me, thank you, thank you.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, so with all that in mind, I will consider adjustments and amendments to the agenda, if anyone has any. I'm sort of guessing none, but. Moving on to communications and public comment. Lynn, you said you had a note from, a note from the town of Grafton. And even though we're going to sort of moot the thing that they're asking about, why don't you reread that if you wouldn't mind?
So Superintendent Pratt received an email from William G. Kearns, J.D., Grafton Town Administrator, at 5 o'clock. It states, "The Select Board of the Town of Grafton and the Clerk-Treasurer support the position that to cancel and postpone municipal elections until such time as we have moved past the peak of this virus and/or Secretary and Governor of this state have agreed upon and issued changes to the election process to account for voter safety from this highly contagious disease." Quote unquote. During this infectious time, it is not safe for voters to gather or counters to tabulate any ballots. Because of the cost of voting by Australian ballot, the Select Board does not support voting on school issues by Australian ballot. On behalf of the Select Board and Clerk-Treasurer, signed, William G. Kearns, Grafton Town Administrator."
All right, we have that in the hopper. Hopefully, we'll address that in the next several minutes. We do have guests here, Charlotte and, oh, I've lost track. There was another.
Lynn and Michelle.
Dolph there.
No, it's Jess, Lynn, Jack and Cheryl voting members tonight.
Hmm? No, this was, this was, we had people who were guests and they were Michelle Dolph and Charlotte, and I didn't know if they had anything that they wanted to say ahead of the meeting.
This is Michelle and I'm just here to listen.
All right, Michelle. And Charlotte, you've got a mute on, if you can unmute and say anything you like.
She's written in the chat now at the moment.
Again, I'm just here to listen, thank you.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Hopefully, as the glitches get out of the system, it'll be easier and easier for people to participate. All right, on number 4A, and you'll excuse my voice, "Discussion of District Meeting Set for April 9th, 2020." I can't tell you how much communication I've had with the Secretary of State's office, with Tim Ash, with Mitzi, what's his last name? The, from, the House, from our, from our state senators, from the Secretary of State in person and various members of the, of our town clerks. Here's the deal. We passed, we had a bill passed, I think it's 681, that will allow us to both kill the town, the district meeting and substitute some sort of ballot measure if we so choose. So it's been passed into law. It wasn't very well written, but it's passed. And it makes us the legislative authority with the capability of making these kind of changes. I'm, in my discussions with Will, I think that we, and we've had, we've had them almost daily, this is true, in my discussions with Will, we've come to the conclusion that the best thing for us and for other districts in our situation is to go to a mail-in ballot, but not to set a date now, simply because the collective feeling is that there is no safe form of participation at present, and we do not know when it will be safe to have any form of voter input, whether it is a in-person Australian ballot, a mailed Australian ballot, or a, a meeting of the community. There aren't any good choices. And what we need tonight, what I'm going to ask you tonight to do is simply to cancel the meeting scheduled for April 9th. And we will rewarn that meeting as soon as we can determine a date when that feels practicable. At that time, I will ask you all to choose the format of your preference, whether it would be to resume an in-person meeting, to do the mail by ballot, a mail-in ballot, or to do an in-person ballot. Will and I think that the most likely and most sanitary of those alternatives would be a mail-in format. What we cannot do is we cannot do an electronic meeting of this type. The Secretary of State is on record, federal government is on record, as saying they don't want to, they don't support having district meetings in this format where the voters have to choose because authenticating potentially hundreds of people is impossible. And I agree with that. And I think that Will Sennings feeling, he's the elections guy for the Secretary of State, is that of these options, the mail-in ballot probably is the one that they would recommend when the time comes. And it would be his expectation that we would compensate the three towns for their costs for doing this. But again, we're a little in advance of that. Jess, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I have a question. Because I fully support canceling this until such time as we have more information about anything. But I believe our choice as the board would just be Australian ballot. And then it would also, and then it would be up to the towns to determine how they're going to administer Australian ballot via, whether it is through the mail or in person, is that correct? I don't think we can tell the towns they have to do it by mail. We just say Australian ballot.
We, the towns are obligated to use whatever format is recommended by the Secretary of State's office.
Right.
And the Secretary of State's office as of Friday was saying this was, this was what they presumed would happen. But again, one of the, one of the points of all this is, we want to give them as much bandwidth to make up their mind. And instead of me having a discussion with the town clerks and like I've got the authority to have the Secretary of State do it, who actually does? And I think that's.
Right, that's what I was, I guess my point was, as a board, we can't say mail-in ballot. We can just say Australian ballot when the time comes.
Yeah, well, as I say, I think it's a, it's real, whatever we come to an agreement with, with Will Sennings is probably the one that we'll go with. We're far from the only place, I know that Westminster has a, has a budget vote themselves and tried to do an electronic, essentially a digital town meeting like this, and we're told quite explicitly that they couldn't. Russ Hoskins was still of the view that just because he said no didn't mean no for real, but that's his issue, not mine. And so, you know, my protocol is going to be to keep in touch every few days with Will just to see what he thinks. And then we'll prepare a proposal for you all to go forward. So what I need for the moment will be, I'll be entertaining a motion to cancel the district meeting set for April 9th until such time as the Secretary of State and the Chair determine a convenient time to reconvene. Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
I just started to say so loose, this is Cheryl. I would be pleased to make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this?
Oh, Charlotte Gifford is asking.
Something from Charlotte. Hold on, Charlotte, just a second, I gotta find my.
She's just asking if she can comment.
Pardon? Yes, go ahead.
This is probably not technically in order, so rule me out if you wish, but I would like to respectfully request that the Board do two things in this regard. First, regardless of the date of a future voter meeting, assuming that you cancel this meeting, that the Board distribute the required report to the voters now, in any case, it was due this past week. And secondly, to hold a purely informational meeting via Zoom or other platform with no action allowed, because Jack, I totally agree with you about the authentication question, but with the opportunity for the public to comment. At our, at our usual meetings, we do, we do not, the moderator will ask anyone not from the town to stand, but that's about the sum of our authentication for comment. So I think these two things would be important, that the voters without delay get the report of the, of the Board and that we do have an option for an informational meeting. And I thank you and I apologize if that, if you deem that out of order.
I did deem that totally in order. Lynn, has, Lynn, you've distributed some of these, right?
Yes, they were distributed on April 1st, I think, or the, no, March 31st. And so I put 10 in the Westminster Town Hall, no, 20 at Westminster, 20 at Grafton and 10 in Athens. Although there was no one in the Athens office, I put them, I slid open, they have a, a kind of signage thing in front, and I just slid it open and I stuck 10 in there and closed it. All the, the town clerks or the town assistants knew that we were coming that day to deliver them. The rest of them are actually in the SU office foyer. So they could go to the SU office, not talk to anyone and just grab, you know, one of the reports. But the reports are at the town offices. When I said, "Do you want more?" at Westminster, they said, "No, probably use them for Kinlan anyway." And I think that.
Could I ask if they are, where they are posted online? Because I did not find anything at all on the WNESU site. And that doesn't require any paper or kindling or anything.
I, Lynn, this is Jack again. I, I tend to agree that, you know, I know we tend not to put tons and tons and tons of paper online, but I think this case, we should put the entire report as a PDF online if we could. We, more people will see it that way than they're going to see it any other way, given current circumstances. And it's pretty unreadable, no matter what, so it can be unreadable on a computer in addition.
And we had asked that, I had asked that earlier. The, the, the short answer is, there's no one document of the PDF, so there's one, you know, one piece written here, and then someone brought in some other pieces, and then some other pieces came from this person and that person. So they're all different, they're all different documents that, all different in the computer documents that have been printed out to make the, the total book. But I'm sure we can figure out something.
But Charlotte just mentioned that, she just posted in chat that you could post a folder of all the documents, although I know, I think that might be hard to read because I know they don't, some of the charts and Excel spreadsheets don't mean anything without the narrative that goes with them. But I think Ricky's not here. You can actually merge those documents into a single PDF.
Yeah, and what I might do, go ahead.
Well, it's just something Ricky could have done, but definitely I would like to see those online because I haven't been able to see that report either. And I don't think people realize that they can still go to the town halls where the SU offices to pick up documents because the, the general impression is that those buildings are closed.
Yeah, and maybe what I'll do is, in addition to Charlotte's quite good point about an informational meeting, much the way I'd suggested, Lynn, to you and to, and to, to our superintendent about having a narrated version, I could do a narrated PowerPoint and we could stick it up there as well, just to walk people through the various parts. I'm, I'm, it's a lot easier than anything else, and I can do that in addition to having an online, essentially electronic town hall. And I'm willing to sign up for both of those, I think. Jessa?
Well, what does everyone else think? Charlotte's idea of turning the scheduled meeting time on the 9th, canceling the meeting and turning it into like a, a town hall information session, seems like a good idea, if not the 9th, depending on when we can get the report out, because I think people should have access to the report at least a day or two before the information session. I would like to do that as well, and I think the voters, the fact that they can have an information session where anybody can speak, you know, maybe we could do that next week.
Well, yeah, I think, I see either, I don't know if it's from June or Charlotte, that the April 9th is, you know, let's keep the message simple and do the, have, have the message coming out of tonight that we're canceling it, we'll send it to all parties where we can, and we'll put it up on the, on this, in front of the school building. And then we'll announce, or I'll announce the town hall, if you don't mind, just because it's easier. I'll announce the town hall, we'll get it into all the papers, it'll probably be in early May, because I think it'll be easier, we can get, we can get notice into the, into the Westminster Gazette, because we've managed to screw that up the last couple of times we tried. And, and use that, if you don't mind letting me have the discretion to do that.
I am happy that you have the discretion to do that, but I don't know if we want to wait till early May, that's a month from now. And we don't know how everything is going to shake out in this state if we're back to business as usual months from now.
Yeah.
I don't, a informational town hall session, we can have multiple of them, and I don't think they're subject to the warning requirements like a meeting would be.
Okay.
What do you think about that?
I'm perfectly willing to do multiple ones. And you can always have just a substitute for them whenever I feel like I don't want to do them.
I think maybe like two weeks from now would be better than early May.
Do you want to have that as a second item after the first one?
Yeah, we still, I think we still have an open motion on the first one.
We do, and I was seeing, you can have your hand up. Lynn?
When we put out a notice for that, we need to put out some specific directions on how to get on. And I think like mentioning being on Chrome, I don't know how many other people are on Safari. Safari didn't support it last time for me.
Yeah.
Chrome had no trouble getting on.
I'll make sure that people know that Chrome and, Chrome and Firefox work and Opera works, not that anybody besides me ever uses it.
And that they could just call in on a regular phone.
Right.
We need to put the exact phone number down because it's confusing as to which number to use.
Okay.
There's nothing lists Vermont.
Sounds all good to me. Anyway, thanks, Charlotte, those were all great suggestions. I'm looking, do we have any other further discussion? Cheryl, I can't see your hand, so speak now.
I have nothing to add right now, thank you, I appreciate Charlotte's suggestion, so.
All right, I see, I believe, is it June Lupiani on the, is that the June in question here?
She's muted.
Pardon?
The June who has joined the meeting is muted, so we can't hear who it is.
Ken, Lynn, can you unmute June?
It might be June Streeter too.
Or June Streeter. June, can you hear us?
So I unmuted her, so I don't know if she can hear us.
June, can you hear us? Well, just, it's just simply for the record, I always like to know who's here and who isn't.
Give her a second, if she just joined, because my Zoom freezes up when I join a meeting as soon as I click "Use Computer Audio," I have to wait like a minute. So just give her a minute.
I just admitted Bridget Goodell. Hello, Bridget? I'm unmuting you, Bridget. Oh, she's doing it herself.
I'm trying to unmute myself, sorry. Hello?
Hi, Bridget, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Pretty good. We're, we're meeting this evening and we are discussing a proposal to cancel the April 9th meeting and resume it on a date to be determined by the Chair and the Secretary of State, Under-Secretary of State for Elections, Will Sennings, with the approval of this Board. And that will clear up the issue of how we, what's happening on April 9th. It's, we, we've been having a lot of discussions with the Secretary of State's office and feel this is the optimal, or at least suboptimal way of doing this. And we are, I'm looking at this point for a, for, I'm going to ask if all are in favor.
We need to call the roll, Jack.
Yes, to call the roll, thank you. So why don't we call the roll? Jessa?
Aye.
Lynn?
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Aye, and we're still missing Boissa and we're still missing Charles. So I'll say aye as well, so it's four to nothing in favor. And we have settled that issue.
Thank you.
All right. Now, initially, the next item on this agenda was put in when we thought that we had to have a certain date for resuming. And now that we don't, I'm not sure people want to get into this, but we can if you'd like. And this is.
Well, Jack, this is Cheryl, I think with Bridget and June having, with Bridget and June having joined us after this discussion, the suggestion that we had from Charlotte Gifford, a member of the public who was on, was that in the interim, we have essentially a town meeting. We're waiting for the guidance from the Secretary of State's office. Jack has been on the phone with legislative leaders and the Secretary of State's office literally nearly every day, if not more than once a day. And so we, we are waiting for their guidance about when we might have the next meeting, which presumably would be, one, to take votes by Australian ballot. But prior to that, we want to make sure there's a time, a time for as many of the three towns' people as possible to participate in town meeting, discussion, to have their questions answered. So that's what happened prior to, those of you who just joined the phone, catching up with us here. But I think we don't need to do anything further with setting a date at this point, since you're waiting for additional, for additional information, unless you're aiming to have the informational meeting within two weeks, as Jessa West Clark suggested.
Well, I just want to clarify, Cheryl, I think we should use the phrase "town hall" and not "town meeting."
Thank you.
Just to, just so it's clear.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I need to get something in, in the various digital things that are circulating also, to make sure people know that we are canceled and that there will be a town hall, electronic town hall, there'll be multiple ones, but we'll try to get the first one within the next 10 days. We'll commit to that. And we'll have to, Susan, we're going to be able to give you, is that enough time? I, I want to make sure that we, whatever we say about this can merit at least a small notice.
I'm just pulling up the. I'm just pulling up the SEU calendar.
Yeah, can we, Lynn, while you're doing that, one of the things that'd be important is, this time I want to look at our calendars, so we don't do what we did for April ninth, have it on a date that conflicts with other stuff. So I'm going to ask you to kind of look through and see what's a clear date, and I'll get back to me, and we'll pick something and get it to Susan and to the various emergency circulars, there's one in, in Athens, and there's one in, in Grafton at least, that we can get to, and I'm-
I got them on Facebook, so my question to you is, is there a requirement of a certain amount of days before we can have a town hall meeting, I mean, do we have to notify all the constituents 30 days, or, you know, like it is?
Yeah, no, there is no action, there is not even a commitment for the entire board to be there, this is just a-
Information session.
And it is not, there is nothing, actually, I did talk to Will about this at one point, and we can do it anytime that we want, we just need to post it.
And you're looking at two weeks from now?
Well, no later than two weeks from now.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll look, while you continue, I'll, I'll look at certain dates on the, our internal calendar.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, Easter now is just Patriots' Day, which I guess doesn't matter in Vermont.
Yeah, well, they're not going to be doing any running this year.
Oh, yeah, I think after Easter, there's nothing for a little while.
Yeah, Patriots' Day is the only thing I know of, I just don't know what the, what the, I want to make sure that we don't conflict with the towns, we don't conflict with, with any other major item, I will ask for a little bandwidth at the various select board meetings, just to let people know as well, because they tend to be pretty good in terms of getting the word out, in addition to whatever we post.
Think that April 23rd looks good, and that's a Thursday, our usual meeting day, I do not know the meeting days of the town select boards.
I can, I've got that somewhere, I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Yeah, Grafton is a Monday, they have a meeting today.
Yeah, Kim, are you there? Lynn?
Lynn? The Athens one is the third Thursday of the month.
What is, you know what the date, that date is?
Is it the 23rd?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, too, we had this history right along.
Yep.
Yeah, the next, there's a Grafton, oh, am I muted, there's a Grafton Select Board meeting on the 20th, that's a Monday.
All right, and when is, is anybody, Cheryl, do you know what the date is for the, the West one?
I'm thinking it's a Wednesday, I don't have it at the tip of my fingers, I'm sorry.
I'll just simply ask for, for space in each one of these, and, and I think it is important to note, just again, for the record, that should we, should we, I'm going to think about this. We, actually, Chris, I'm going to ask you this question. Do we need to have, do we need to allocate money for, to compensate for these folks beforehand, because we're, if we go to a, a ballot measure, whether it is a mail-in, or it is any type of ballot measure, it, it involves the town clerks, it involves ballot counters, it is, it involves their time, and it's a special thing, and I did ask Will Sennings about this, he felt it was, as long as the fees were reasonable, that we should feel obligated to pay for their time and materials, do I need to have a number now, or can we wait?
Um, you know, I would say, I agree with that, I think based on the circumstances, we do want to compensate them for their spending on this, and I think it gives you time to come up with a number with the board, what that compensation would look like.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, $3,500, more, you know, more or less, for, for Westminster, because again, their concern was that they've never counted this type of stuff up like this, I don't think they've done a vote by mail before, and I'm pretty sure that, Kim, if you're still there, we've never done one in Grafton either, right?
No, there's never been one in Grafton.
Well, we're going to learn so many things in the next few weeks, um, okay.
This would be similar to absentee ballots for the entire town, right, is that this, basically the same process, Kim?
Yep, it would be, other than, it depends on when we can open them, like, our town cannot open them until the day of.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're going to put them through an autoclave or something, don't we? Oh, man, all right, all right, then, then, then we can't, we can't allocate money tonight, because we really got no idea what this is going to cost, or even if we're doing it that way, but we, I may call you all in for five minutes, yes, Lynn?
Um, Jessa found out that the Westminster is the second and fourth Wednesday, what if we did our town hall meeting on a Tuesday, Tuesday doesn't seem to be a select board meeting day.
It's about the only one.
Yep, so then we can free to pick whichever week we want.
Yeah, you all know, I try like crazy to avoid Tuesdays, but I just have to do it.
Well, the, April 23rd is the fourth Tuesday of April, it's not the third Tuesday, and I think Athens meets on the third, I mean, Thursday, Athens meets on the third Thursday, but April 23rd is the fourth Thursday.
Oh, okay.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, let me, let me, please, just give me the forbearance for some discretion, and we'll, I'll get a date, and I'll announce it out to everybody, and it'll just, it'll require one less meeting for everybody, if you don't mind.
Do you need a, we don't need a motion for that, because it's an information session, or do you need a motion?
Just authorize me to have an information, Senator, a date to be determined.
I, I move that we authorize Jack Breyer to set up information sessions as he sees fit in whichever town on whatever date.
God, I feel completely empowered, this is just, all right. Right, is this going to die for lack of a second?
I second that.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, then that, that's happened. Now, 4B, again, was originally, was updating and revising, revising the district meeting, and the reason why I'm, I brought this up is, we didn't do a couple of things that are kind of interesting, we didn't, we didn't ask the voters to allocate compensation for the, for our board, and that's not okay by me, I, you know, certainly, we, I don't know, how much, Cheryl, how much were the voters overpaying the, the Westminster Board back when they were an independent board?
Oh, it seems like it was in 600 something, I don't really remember right now.
Somebody want to pull some figures for this? Don't all speak at once.
I will actually look back, so the Grafton was $500. I will look on the Westminster website right now, because it should be in the town meeting warning.
All right, hold on just for a second, while I take this, and Jessa, why don't you, actually, because I can see you, and they can see you, why don't you, if you don't mind, Cheryl?
What did he just ask me to do?
I think that he wanted to have someone continue, but I have a clarifying question I'd like to ask, we opened the meeting with the, a motion to cancel, and did we approve that motion to cancel the April 9th meeting?
We did.
unanimously.
Good.
Yeah, we did, and it was a roll, it was a roll call vote, Lynn, name by name.
That's what I thought, I wanted to be sure, and we talked about putting the PDF online of the school report, so that's, I, we didn't vote on that, but that was a request from the board, so we'll make that happen, and then we're talking still on the town hall meeting, great, thank you.
And also, Lynn, at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later, I may do a sort of a narrated walkthrough, that'll be online, because not everybody will want to be at the, be at these town halls, and there should be at least something that can translate the, the gibberish, that is our spreadsheets, to explain what's going on with that stuff, and I, I can do that. So, all righty. Now, we're back to the item, which is, again, we're at 4B, revision of district meeting, and one of the items that we didn't have is compensating the board, did we get it, Cheryl, were you able to find, or who was it that was looking it up?
I'm still looking.
500 seems pretty reasonable, to say the least, but does the Chair get a dollar more?
I seem to recall Westminster might have been 1,000 before taxes?
That would be for the Chair, it was maybe 1,000 or 1,200, the board members, I looked in my checkbook, and I can see the net is 600 something, 642 or something like that, after taxes were taken out, so I'm not sure what the gross was, it was 64242, last time I have it noted.
That sounds like 750 before taxes.
Okay.
Think that'll give everybody a reason to vote, another reason to vote down the budget, to-
Well, I knew they were different.
And I think the Chair, my memory is maybe 1,200 growth in Westminster, but I'm not sure why we're, of all of the things that we could have on our agenda, I don't know why this is relevant right now.
Well, it's because we've never, it's not in our, it's nowhere in any of our documentation, so I have no ability to pay anybody, and I, it's in the, in a live meeting, it would be an item, but we didn't put it in, and I wanted to make sure that we had that, we also needed to have an item to approve a and a, and a clerk for the meeting, so those, you know, if you've been to the, those terrible high school district meetings, they always do that, and this is the same kind of thing. We, if we're going to convert this all to a, to a ballot of some sort, we should have those, and I just want to have the discussion, we, we don't have to vote on this tonight, but when we rewarn the meeting, I want to have those items in the revised articles. We have a, yes, Jessa?
I agree, this is a really minor thing, but it is part of the budget, and I know in the past, in Grafton, when the school budget is voted on, the warning language is something to the effect of, shall we vote for X number of dollars for the school budget, including $500 per school director, I don't think any of us really expected to be paid anything this year, because, because I don't know if it, is it required that that language is part of the warning, because it is common in the towns to have that?
Right, I'm just saying that when, the reason I'm mentioning this is, since we will be essentially rewarning the meeting, we, there, all the articles are, could be, if people wanted to revise, you know, we could, we could double the budget, we could cut money out of the budget, we could set compensation for people, and the, and we do need elements like, the officers will need to be elected somehow, and so that's a moderator, a clerk, and the board members, and I don't think, we, we, I know I didn't think of that stuff when we were crafting this the last time, but it's been made clear to me that I should.
I, I agree with all of that, Jack, this is Cheryl, I just think we need to have a comprehensive list, list of those things that need to be turned into something that would be a part of the series of things to be voted on by Australian ballot, so these are only a couple of examples.
Well, if, if people think, I see Justice suggesting that we put a little list together, and I think it's a great idea, so why don't we do that, and when we meet, we will meet to, to rewarn this, and we may meet to do other things, but that sounds like a place, yeah, I, I think, Jessa, you're suggesting that town halls might be a place also to kind of do some what-if-ing with constituents, I think that's particularly true, because we are talking about a community that's, I know, the community of Grafton, or about a quarter of the population lost their jobs in the last, two and a half weeks, and they may have some real views as to how we, whether or not these budgets are, are okay, they may have other few views about a lot of this stuff, so we, it makes sense to run it by them. Anything else, Jessa?
No, I, just sort of parting, parting thoughts that, I don't think it was VT Digger, it might have been Channel 3, there was, someone did a piece today about how the 2020 fiscal year school budgets are-
Yeah, we've lost you, Jess, was it?
Sorry, can you hear me now? There was a piece in a various news outlet today, that for 2020 fiscal year, budgets are pretty well under control, and the tax payments have pretty well been made, so up until the end of June, everybody looks kind of okay.
Yeah.
After that, there's been a lot of job loss, unemployment, even with the CARES Act, just the, when are people going to receive their money, so much is up in the air, the state of Vermont is actually concerned about tax revenues, that people simply can't pay their property taxes, and the other tax revenues that go into various funds are going to be way down already, we know things like room-to-meal tax are way, way down. I think part of this town hall process, there's going to be a lot of questions about revising the budget, and I just think that's something we should be prepared for people to ask about.
Yeah, one of the, one of the penalties that we have encountered is, that had we done this in March, we'd have our budget, we'd all be done with it, but those of us who have, were doing these later, are caught up in the fear here, I think it's, it is something that we'll have to address, and we'll find out what it's like when I get into those town halls, and we'll just have to see, you know, I, I think that it would be tragic if the Athens, Grafton, Westminster children were the ones that get disproportionately penalized for this, because all the other budgets passed, and they're all moving ahead. I did talk to Brad James, again, one of the many people I've talked to a couple of times, and two things, that there is supposed to be provision in the federal bailout for states, but as I told you, I went through all 800 pages of it, and there was nothing specific to education, and so that is a legitimate concern, I think a lot of this is supposed to be discretionary at the state level, and to the best of my knowledge, despite all the hoo-ha about this, so far, not so much the dime has moved from the federal treasury to anybody, including all of our small business people, who are really kind of counting on something like now, and so we're just going to see what it feels like. Don't know. Find out. Anything else we need to touch on, folks? Are we having fun yet? Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's do some, Jack, maybe just some quick directors come- Let's do some, Jack, maybe just some quick directors comments, if we can.
Yeah, sure.
I just, you know, as I see the Liz Hardy's face and Doug's name here, and Lynn Carey and Chris Pratt, and look at the names of members of the public for being here. I think I wanna especially focus on those of you who are right there, working with the teachers and the children every day. And again, to say, we know how difficult this is and are just with you every day. Thank you.
Uh, when, anything?
Um, I would like to just thank Chris Pratt and the entire staff with all that they're doing in this, being in contact with my brother who's a teacher in California, and he's not getting much support from his administration. So thank you for everything you guys are doing here.
Um, Jessa?
Um, yeah, the administration, you guys are feeding the kids, the teachers and the parents are checking in on them. I know some of the parents have actually gone to great lengths to check in on their kids, because families have technology issues or what have you. So it's, they're taking care of them. I think education is temporarily almost a secondary concern, and that's fine with everybody, I think, right now, because this is just completely uncharted. So thank you very much for everybody who's doing any part of this.
Okay. I would say that despite the rumor of all these, of all these grievances that had supposedly piled up and we kept on hearing about, it sounds like from Chris, there are none, that people are really sucking it up and doing the right thing. And we gotta get your people masks and gloves, Chris. But beyond that, I'm really pleased that everybody is hanging in there as best they can. And we're gonna learn a lot about how we do education, probably this year, and a lot of it will be applicable to coming years. And I guess we should just take a lot of notes. That's it. Entertaining a motion to adjourn. All in favor, turn off your computer.